I figured you had a little free time.
Yeah, I could have used it last week.
Good luck with it.
Next, we'd like to introduce Mrs. Nancy Fornier, the principal of AM Chafee School, who will be giving us a quick tour of the school and showing it to town some of the highlights of the things that you've been able to achieve since you've been the principal here, so, you're on.
This is the library slash media center, and what has been added is a full computer lab for all of the students to use, where using it not only for computer classes which are being taught for the children by our media specialists, but we're also encouraging teachers to bring their classes in to integrate the technology into the regular curriculum. Plans are in the works for some professional development to give support to the teachers so that we can build on the program that we presently use. It's also being used as the place where the MAP testing is given. We'll be doing testing tomorrow beginning two days, grade three, and then grade four to follow after that. And we're also trying to use it for literacy lessons as a reward sometimes or a way for the kids to publish the works that they're doing in the classroom. So it is a work in progress. We're seeing more and more students using the computers as part of the classroom activities, and it's been a great addition to Chafee School.
That's all. Mr. Peterson?
I know we've set up these media centers in all the buildings and we're showcasing them. Do we still have any of the teachers assigned with laptops and things? Do we have any mobile portable that go to the room, or do they all have to come here to use the media center for any of the computer systems?
Each of the teachers does have a computer within their own classroom. Some have stations of two or three additional computers to use. And in the teacher's workroom, there is also a computer for all the teachers and also specialists who come in can access that computer as well.
Thank you. That was a question that was asked of me after it wasn't shown. They couldn't see the computer in each individual classroom when we took it to the middle school. So I just want the public to know that we do have these in the individual classrooms that are accessed to them also at the same time, so thank you.
Great. We're gonna follow you.
Based, with the exception of the very back row, all of them faced one way before we had them facing each other, and then she was trying to demonstrate something, it wasn't easy, so, yeah. That's a great classroom setting. There was one fourth grade and one second grade in this way, and I decided we were toward fourth grade, and I said, yeah, I'm second. So that definitely happened. This is some of the artwork that one of the parents, Tina Graves, did for us. Came in and decided to decorate the walls of Chafee School. You'll see a lot of her artwork is also in the hallway and made for Tina Graves, which is one of the parents.
Oh, wow. Fantastic.
Yes.
Fan parents.
Yeah. And she worked on these all last year. We would just come in, she started with sketches, and we'd come in and work the whole process, transfer it to the wall, and the kids were just as much enamored by the whole process. Every day we'd just kind of walk over and stare at what she was doing. And what's really interesting about them is as simple as they are, each one of the characters does have its own personality. The detail is amazing, the laces on the shoes.
Isn't that nice? That's really great.
It is, it's nice if it's up to the wall.
And by not using paper, it's still looking fine.
Yeah, there you go.
Fast inspection for that. And she continued this all the way down leading into the doorway.
Wow.
I love that.
You gotta detect right off.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have her move right up and do this in every one of those floors. This is great.
And she just finished, or has this been finished?
No, she finished this last year. It's beautiful.
And it gives them some sort of...
And one of the children has Chafee regularity. And yes. And then you can see the different clusters where the children would sit. Papers are out, ready to go for tomorrow morning. This is a classroom where the puppies are actually inside.
The rugs look still pretty good.
I said your rugs look still pretty good.
Actually, they're holding up.
Yeah. And one of the moves that we had made was putting first grade classrooms into rooms where there is a bathroom for each of them to use, as opposed to having them use the bathroom that the fourth graders were using. That's the way it was before, so that was one of the moves that was made last summer.
Cool. Very nice. Very good, thank you.
It is a literacy, basically, classroom. It is used for the Wilson Foundation double-dosing, which provides small group instruction reinforcement of the basic foundation lesson that's being taught in the classroom. So students are identified through testing, DIBLs testing, and through it, any students at risk or showing some risk or slight risk, we put them into groups and they are instructed in small groups in here.
So this isn't just Wilson-based, this is used for other type also?
Right. Right now, it's pretty much where we started this to double-dose and reinforce the reading lessons that are being done in the classroom. But the double-dose method is one that the foundations program has utilized, and they're finding that the results show that the kids make, you know, pretty drastic improvement and feel very comfortable working in the small groups. But we're gonna do all the progress monitoring as we go along, so we're scheduled for another round of DIBLs testing in February, and then we'll assess those results and either add and, you know, possibly be moving students in and out. So this was nice to be able to have a room. It's not huge, but it still gives us enough space. We have storage for the materials that we need, and so far, you know, it's worked out well for us.
This is the only non-classroom setting in this building at this point in time? No closets in here?
We have a small room that is basically off of the library. It's a little bit smaller than this, but it also allows for some instruction as well. We have a Title I office where we can also instruct in small group as well. So they're...
I know.
This is our...
That is so cool. Oh, that is cute.
A little fire.
Wow.
Wow, a little fire.
She's good.
Yeah, she's good.
When you look at the faces, you can have the smile.
Oh, yeah.
Waving out, yeah.
Wow.
Is that really, huh? Jazzes it up.
And again, I'm in fire cones.
Yeah. Well, it is, because you get stuck, you have to get those on.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
But it started with this, right, Nancy? It started with the mascot.
Actually, that was the end of it.
Oh, with the end?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah. As I said, I needed a drawing of a child, and, you know, "Oh, I'll do it," she said, but then she brought me, like, multiples, and I couldn't pick. There were also, I said, "I wanna put these on my office," you know? And then she was like, "Well, I could paint them on the wall." "Oh, no, that's okay." And then it was, she just wanted to, and she really would come in and spend the day here, and as I said, the kids got used to having her here. You know, and every once in a while, I see a blank space, I start thinking, I wanna put something in, like the cafeteria.
Why don't she get that notebook?
I know.
Is her child still in Chafee?
Yes. Her daughter is actually beautiful.
Ah, beautiful. Great, great job.
You know, would walk by and start another one, and then go back to this guy and just work on those pants again, or try to get the hair right. So, you know, she would spend days on one.
So how many were done, and how long did it take all of these guys to be finished? Six months, a year?
She worked on it from the fall of last year, and again, finished up in the spring, but didn't work every single day. So it started with doing this, and then we decided, well, let's keep the characters going down, so then she came back and would work on that. And then we decided near the gym, we wanted some sports figures, so she decided then to come back and work on that. And then we decided with the mascot. So that was done in basically the spring of last year.
Are they sealed?
Yes.
So the paint is preserved and it won't get...
Yes. Because we had put, the PTO had in the beginning of the year painted a boy and girl figure on the bathroom doors, so they would know, and you'll see that some of the paint was scratched off. So that's why we decided she was going to spend all this time...
Ms. Fornier, I wanted to thank you for that tour. It was really amazing to see the drawings you have. As a child coming into school, I could see how that would just light your day up. I mean, that is just, I'm still speechless at it. It's absolutely beautiful. And then the things that the town has done as well, I really think we're on the right path, and hopefully we don't have to take any steps backwards this coming year, but certainly from what I can see, you know, we've got a pretty good thing going here at Chafee School, and I appreciate your efforts and your staff's efforts as well.
Well, it is, you know, it's everyone pitching in and deciding, you know, what's best for the kids. Ultimately, that's the driving force, and sometimes it takes a while for that to come through as the driving force, but eventually it is. I mean, it's a fun place. You walk in and people see that, you know, the kids like being here. And we're also seeing them taking more pride in the building when you have artwork up or the rooms are clean or it looks neat. Then, like the classroom that I walked into, you know, you walk in in the morning, and as I said, if you were a child walking in there, I mean, there's your stuff. It's right there for you. Your chair is where it's at. It's neat. You know where everything is. When that teacher leaves at the end of the day, things are placed and put in place for the following day. So, you know, in any classroom, we could have picked anyone along the way and you would have found exactly the same thing. So as you noticed, the carpets look great, you know, and that's with snack and food and things on them, but the kids will, you know, help to pick up if they have pride in their environment, so...
That's great. Good job, and we all appreciate your time.
Thank you. Very positive atmosphere. You can see that in Felix.
Everybody good? All right. We will move the minutes that we have listed on our agenda until the next meeting. We don't have a quorum on either of those two dates, so we will hopefully at the next meeting be able to do that. We have no unfinished business. New business, there is none. I'm sure they will be coming up pretty soon, but right now, there's none. I did get some correspondence, which I really did wanna make public because I really thought it was a great little touch to what we had for Dr. Shaw last meeting. "This was dear members of the Oxford School Committee. Last Monday's evening's award ceremony was a very warm occasion for me to cherish on a very cold January evening. Many thanks for making the ceremony a very special event for me to value and remember for a long time. The gift of the education plaque is very beautiful, and I have displayed it, will be seen by very often. Many thanks. To use an often overused cliche, I received much more than I contributed in my service to the education system of Oxford, and I am certain that this may be experienced by members of your committee. My deepest thanks and appreciation are offered you for your dedication and valued service that you practice so sincerely. Again, many thanks. Sincerely, Walter Shaw, MB." So I just wanted to make the committee aware of that thank you note from us, and again, Dr. Shaw, we again appreciate everything that you've done over the years as a school committee member and as our physician, so thank you again. Subcommittees, I mean, I can just briefly touch where we are in the superintendent's search. We have another meeting this Thursday. Basically, this meeting will be to establish questions to be asked during the interview process. It's my understanding we have seven applications presently. Each of the members will be reviewing those applications in preparation for Thursday's meeting, and we'll begin the process very shortly, so you will be seeing that as an ongoing thing. And I think we actually have a great group that's with me doing this, so I'm very excited about working with these people. Next, we could ask the superintendent of schools, if you would, to tell us what's new and give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things. First of all, I have a couple of votes that need to be taken by the committee. The Southern Worcester County Education Collaborative needs to have record of the fact that the school committee votes the superintendent to be their representative at all of the board meetings, so I would ask the committee if they would vote that at this meeting, and then I can take the minutes when they are approved and send it into the Southern Worcester County Collaborative.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we put that to a vote, please? Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWittson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so there you go, Mr. Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then I have one vote that I will say that I was in error about, and that was the...
Let me mark this on the calendar here. Mr. Boss admitted he was in error.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can mark that if you'd like. When I asked the committee to vote on the two signatures from the school committee on the payables and the payroll, that can only be attributed to the payroll and not the payables. And so we still need three signatures on the payables. So if the committee would vote to rescind the vote on the payables, I would appreciate that, and then have three members get in there and sign all the warrants.
All right, now, second question. Would we have to re-vote?
No.
Two signatures on the payroll?
No. Just rescind the three signatures on the payables.
All right, so we have to take it. Mr. Peterson?
Two signatures, I mean.
Mr. Peterson?
I really don't care one way or the other on payroll, but the reason the payroll was broken down before is because we had relatives on the payroll and things. If you're in there to sign warrants, you should be able to get three signatures on the payroll too, I don't know what...
Well, we haven't been able to. That's the reason why I asked the committee to change to the two, because we were having difficulty getting three signatures on the payroll and three signatures on the warrant. However, I was wrong on the payables. We do need three signatures, but we only need two on the payroll. But it's up to the committee whichever way you want to go.
Well, that's because payroll goes over and gets two signatures elsewhere, so it has four when it goes down with the payroll. I don't care, but I've just, you're there and whatever. I just found it hard to believe, like, when I heard that. I know I haven't been around Mr. Boss, I'm not picking on anything, but every time warrants call me, they'll come in, I don't know why the problem arose or how we didn't have three people to sign the payroll either, but...
I can't answer that myself, Mr. Peterson, but we were having difficulty.
All right, can we, I think we need a clarification for Mrs. DeWittson?
I was just, for clarity, I think what you might be going at, Mr. Peterson, is to just change it all back to three, so that we don't have two on this, three on that.
Just put it back the way it was, it would simplify everything, then you don't have to worry about two here, three there, and she doesn't have to worry about calling somebody. It's, again, every time I've been called, I've come in off the road or wherever I'm at. I don't know, Mr. Boss, what the problem was, and I'm not picking on anybody down there. I don't, you know...
That's fine with me. I mean, it's up to the committee. If the committee wants to go back to the way we were originally, that's fine. Just rescind the vote and we'll go back to the original...
I'd like to entertain a motion that we revert, or go back to the way we were.
Rescind the vote to those two, not three?
Yes. Do I have a...
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second. Can we put that to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so you're back to three signatures on both.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion.
I mean, if there's a persistent problem, let us know.
Give us names.
Make sure somebody gets in there, all right?
We want names.
Give the names.
We can't get names, that's the problem.
You want names, I'll vote. I'll read out the names that have signed them. Also, I would like to inform the committee that we have entered into a contract with Health Source, which is a consulting firm to come in and study our special ed delivery services. They have, they did come in on the 14th, which was last Wednesday, and spent the entire day interviewing special ed personnel. They are also going over the delivery sheets on the IEPs to see if there is some way in which we can streamline and improve our service delivery with all of our special ed students. In addition to that, they are going over our criteria for out-of-district placements, because as the committee knows, our out-of-district placements have soared in this past year and a half, and they're coming in to see if there's something that we can do to curtail some of this out-of-district placement that we've been going through. They will be getting back to us within 30 days, and I will have a report from the committee at that time, Mr. Howard.
Very good.
Also, I have asked Mr. Laporte to begin to negotiate with a couple of the principals' contracts that are up. We have two principals that I would like him to renegotiate their contracts, and he has agreed to do that starting sometime next week. In response to a question from Mrs. DeWittson regarding the high school guidance department and our bannering our own high school over at the middle school, I will say that the guidance department, Mr. Wells, the athletic director, and the NGROTC will begin at the middle school tooting our horn as to what we have to offer at the high school beginning the second week in February. So they will be doing that. And the last thing that I have, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to bring this up, that I know that we've had a security committee that we've established but has not met. I would like, if possible, to put that committee on hold for the time being. I know in dealing with security and security issues that it's quite a big price tag, and I think under the current fiscal conditions that perhaps it's something that we should put on hold and look at during next year or at some point, because right now, we're going to be scraping for every single dollar that we could possibly raise. So I would ask the committee if they would be willing to do that.
Any comments from the committee on that? Mrs. DeWittson?
I agree. I think we don't have money for the security subcommittee, but I think it was more of a learning process where we hadn't really even developed a conversation between staff and school committee and parents to see what we were even doing. I think it's, I'm not sure that it really had a money value on it. I know we're busy, but I think it's still something to work on, same way we did the full-day kindergarten. We knew we didn't have that money, but we still did that studying, we still did that talking and walking and walking, so I'm not sure that we need to abandon it. It might be just something to set the foundation of a committee so that someday we know where we lie and where our attention should focus on, so I'm not, it's just on the comment.
I think to Mr. Boss's point, that was just to put the committee on hold, not to, in any way, shape, or form, because of its importance, not have the committee go through the process of determining what our security needs are. And I understand your point as well, that we have to start the dialogues first. It's a long process. By the time you really assess what's needed in each school and, you know, within the district, you know, it could be another six months before we could actually have anything on paper that we need to do. I think, I think Mr. Boss, to Mr. Boss's point, is that even in six months, because we did just discuss this briefly today, as we were talking about a couple of other issues, and even within six months, we do not foresee our ability to be able to really implement anything new or additional in this upcoming year. I think it's gonna be probably one of the toughest years that I've faced since I've been on the school committee, and I think that we certainly can keep the committee alive. And I don't feel that that's some direction I wanna go, that I don't wanna see this happen, because I think there's a lot of valuable information that can be gained and learned from that. But at the same time, I don't wanna have the committee go through the work and figure out that there is nothing that we can do based on their recommendations. And I would just hate to see people putting in the time and the energy and then us not responding to what they've determined as our needs. That was kinda my point. So, you know, we, the committee can, we can do whatever the committee would like us to do. I mean, that's certainly up to the committee, how you'd like to handle it. Any further... Do you wanna just leave as is now? You can just do that. Oh, Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry.
I agree with Mr. Boss as far as the economics is concerned, but I agree with Pat. We hadn't determined anything as far as anything. There may be some valuable things that can be done, or at least get wording, dialogue, like she said, going, and something on paper as to what... There's no way you're gonna have anything done before next year's budget anyway. You won't even have anything ready by the October town meeting if there's anything that's needed for money. It's gonna take that long, even if you only meet once a month, something should be done or gotten started, I feel. I don't think we should put it on hold totally.
What's leaving us is...
And I know Mr. Boss is leaving, but it doesn't matter if the committee can continue. It took us a year for the wellness project before we had things down and timelines to meet. We're not up against any particular timeline, but I think that everyone should get to know everyone and find out what's going on and what's needed and what's already in place with the police, fire, or whatever else, all right?
So maybe what we wanna do with Mr. Boss's departure...
And I know Mr. Boss has a lot of that already in place with the police and fire. We have things, but...
Do we want someone else to take his position over during this process, so that we don't have him start the process and disrupt as we go through?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if you don't mind...
Oh, no, no, no.
I would prefer, if you don't mind, I would prefer that that be the direction that you go in, rather than have me be the chair of the committee or even...
Well, that's kinda what I felt.
I could be a, you know, I mean, I could certainly, you know, attend a meeting or two, but I can tell you quite honestly, in talking with Town Hall and going over the budget deliberations with Administrative Council and with Mr. Hemelberger and myself, that our, my energies in any case, all right, in the next two or three months, all right, are definitely going to be towards preserving what we've established in the school department thus far. And I think it's going to take quite a bit of effort in order to do that, and I would, I personally would prefer not to have to put my efforts in any other direction other than that right now.
So, Mrs. DeWittson?
As chair of that subcommittee, I think what we should do is, it's already February, so why don't we plan on starting with the new superintendent and working, obviously, because we have to have a superintendent. We can't get, as soon as we can't access records, we can't access what our form is for evacuation, and it's really just, I think we started off not saying, "Let's see what we can purchase." It was, again, is to stop the communication when we had that incident, so that we all were on the same page. What is our emergency procedures? And it's just to enlighten us as a school committee and the parents that have volunteered and, obviously, the administration, so we're all on the same page. I didn't really foresee that as a buying subcommittee. I think we all know that it was tight, and, you know, we may have wish lists, but that's, again, that's down the road. So I don't have a problem. I know Mr. Peterson and I are both on that. I'd ask Mr. Boss to help coordinate with the fire department and the police, because I think it's easier for someone who's a full-time administrator to kinda coordinate that. But I understand, it's kind of a hectic time of year, so why don't we just put that on hold and we can, this summer...
Kinda regroup.
We regroup, and I will tell the parents that have volunteered to hold on tight, and we can regroup, and I'll be on the same page starting in the summer.
I think, and I think that's the wise choice, to be honest with you, Mrs. DeWittson. I think that we need to focus our, his attention and our attention on the upcoming months and the remainder of his term, and then to also make sure that we're starting the new person's term off correctly as well.
And we'll all start together.
And we'll all start together. So I think that it would just be a smarter move on our part, just to not do away with it, because I understand its importance. And I understand its importance, and I honestly believe that this is something we need to do. I just don't know if this is the right time right now, and that's kinda where I'm at on it. So we'll just leave things as is for now? And that's good? Everybody's good with that?
How is it in June?
I, I think that we need to focus our, his attention and our attention on the upcoming months and the remainder of his term, and then to also make sure that we're starting the new person's term off correctly as well.
And we'll all start together.
And we'll all start together.
Yeah.
So I, I think that it would just be a smarter move on our part, just to not do away with it, because I understand its importance.
No, I understand it should.
And I understand its importance, and I honestly believe that this is something we need to do.
Yeah.
I just don't know if this is the right time right now, and that's kinda where I'm at on it. So we'll just leave things as is for now? And that's good? Everybody's good with that?
My way is in June.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good?
No, but that's the will of the committee, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Um, you all set, Mr. Boss?
Yes, I am, thank you very much.
Mr. Hummelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your packet or in front of you, you should find the enrollment data, uh, both across all grades and then the breakdown, uh, by school and by grade, which, um, Mrs. Dewitzek could ask for. And we do this, um, from time to time throughout the year as part of our reporting requirement to the DOE, um, but I just made sure we have the accurate, uh, update as of, uh, this week. So that is where we stand on the, um, enrollment.
Thank you very much for putting that together. Yeah, it is.
Um, and then the other, uh, piece of, that you would find in your packet would be, uh, the budget update for the current year, and, um, I included the prior two years so we could get a reading as to where we are. Um, two years ago, we had spent forty-six percent of our budget through January twenty-second, last year forty-eight. This year, after we unencumber, um, some of our purchase orders, we're at about a forty-nine percent spend, and we are a little higher, um, than we would like to be, but we continue to monitor every single purchase order. Um, and as you can tell from last year, we had a large substitute expense, if you recall, on the medical maternity leaves. We also had, um, last year, a higher utility cost, um, based upon what was budgeted. This year, we have, uh, some special ed, uh, costs, as Mr. Boss, uh, mentioned, that, um, we really don't have much control over, so what we are doing is reducing spending in other areas to balance that. Um, and I've included, um, a copy of the cost center report, which has a little bit different look, but essentially is the same, uh, format with the same cost centers that we've used in the past, and I would respectfully request the committee's approval for the following line item transfers, and I included the five on the, um, summary, and, and that will bring those cost centers into balance. And, uh, that total is about twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. And we will continue to work on the two thousand and ten budget, uh, so that the superintendent may present that to the committee for the next meeting on February ninth.
All right, do I have, I'd like to entertain a motion. Uh, I'd prefer to do this in one group if we can. It's all from the same cost center.
Okay. I'll make a motion to transfer twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars to cover the shortages in the six cost centers that are indicated.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, can we put that to vote, please? Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dewitzek?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
If you would, Mrs. Conan, I would think that you would, uh, list the five as printed. I haven't told them up. I'm assuming that, that the twenty-six thousand Mr. Hummelberger quoted is right, but, uh, if it isn't, we could be short, so I would, uh, I would think that your motion should be inclusive of the five in the way they're listed. Dollar monks listed.
So could you amend your motion to reflect that?
Absolutely. So it'll be the, as the five cost centers, as printed.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah, second.
So let's go back and re-vote that if we could, Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dewitzek?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so there you go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do we have anything else?
Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, briefly, because there is so much, uh, information that seems to be swirling about, both from the state over the last few days and weeks and also now at the federal level, and, um, we are putting together the two thousand and ten budget, and, and the goal is to hold on to it as much as we can and to at least let the community know, um, what it will take to run the district next year. And, um, with that report to Mr. Boss, um, that should be ready for the next meeting.
Excellent. Excellent.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Very informative again. Uh, Mrs. Conan?
Um, I just have one thing, actually, um, just to let everybody, I'm, I'm unsure if everybody knows, um, but the NJRO TC color guard was selected to, um, be the opening ceremony color guard at tonight's AHL All-Star Game in Worcester.
Oh, that's cool.
So it's kind of a, an exciting day. Worcester is crazy with all the extra people in, in town, so it should be a good night.
Good, very good. Mrs. Dewitzek?
Um, I just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Hummelberger for getting those, break down them, as I think it's important for everybody to know that we watch those constantly, and, and people know that, you know, everybody in the administration's doing a great job, and you see some of these numbers in classes of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they're right on the cusp. So, um, as we go through budgets and people know that it's tough times, we're watching these numbers constantly, and, um, in the elementary, they're pushing, some of those are twenty-five. Um, so we are looking at those, and they are always in front of us. So thank you for getting those. I think it's good that we keep them right in front of us. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Boss for doing the guidance, and what he was referring to is, I had mentioned to Mr. Boss, um, I know our high school goes to our middle school for eighth graders and lets them know what we have at the high school and what's coming up, um, and I know they are all, because I have an eighth grader, so I know this, in fact, they're looking at Bay Path, they're looking at Pro Kio Schools, they're looking at all of those are coming at them now, and I thought, geez, oh, we aren't PR-ing our own Oxford High and the things that we've done, um, and that the high school has offered in the additional AP courses and, and our, uh, junior ROTC and our athletics and our virtual high school, that we've, we've done all that, and to tell them in June might be a little too late. So I said, let's, you know, can we push that? And that's what we did. So I thank you for, uh, getting them to do that, and I'm sure they will hold a great rally for our Oxford High. That's all I have.
Excellent. Mr. Peterson?
Um, I've been away for a while, and I was glad to come back the other night, and we finally got our middle school holiday concert, or whatever you wanna call it, and after all the snow and ice and everything we've had around here, uh, I missed a few of the others, but it was a phenomenal concert. It was unbelievable, the production that they had and the attendance, even with limited parking over there. It was great. So, uh, again, to the middle school, hats off, and to all the rest of the things that have happened for the holiday season, and for them to be negated, I would have hated to see it. It was great that they finally were able to get it in and perform after all the time that they had spent on it. It was fantastic. Where do we stand snow days-wise, Mr. Boss? I, I, you may have reported this before, but...
We've used, we've used four days thus far.
Okay, so we're okay at this point in time?
The potential of using another one on Wednesday.
Right. Well, I didn't wanna say it, but the kids are getting, getting geared up. I saw a lot of sleds and shovels and hats and mittens hanging on the trees today, they're getting ready again for Wednesday, so...
So far, we're okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I mean, the, the state's been monitoring it along with everybody else, so hopefully we're, we're gonna hold up at this point in time. And, Mr. Spitz, I normally wouldn't do this for personal, but if you give me a second, I would like to, uh, I've had a few phone calls and concerns of where I've been and why I haven't attended meetings, and I don't think I normally have to, uh, defend my positions or anything else, 'cause I'm around, but, uh, to those that have and know that my mother passed away, I would like to thank all of you, uh, for your cards, calls, and concerns. So I have not just been skipping meetings. I've spent some time flying back and forth to Wisconsin, and I am back in the groove, and, uh, I will, I take my responsibilities seriously, and I, I'm here to, to continue to harangue you, all right?
I'd have it no other way.
But on a, on a better note, thank you to all that have had phone calls, cards, and, uh, emails to me. Thank you.
Very good. Well, we're very glad to have you back. Um, there's really just one thing I wanted to cover, and it was really for Mrs. Anis, who was not here tonight. She had initially sent out a, uh, a note to pretty much everybody in town, um, about the, the need for a meeting, um, as we go through this budget process with, with all the other boards as well. I, I, at this particular point, um, I don't know what the committee would like us to do with this. She's requesting that, that all the boards get together and discuss the upcoming budget cuts. Chapter seventy funds, we're not touched, and she feels that that's really gonna create kind of a push and pull from each of the different committees, because right now, our budget's pretty much the same, it has to remain the same through the governor, um, and really does not wanna get involved in, in, you know, any hard feelings between any of the other boards, as well as they go through their cuts. I personally, number one, we don't know what these cuts are gonna be yet. It's very difficult to hold meetings in preparation for cuts that might not materialize. Um, I'm not saying we shouldn't all be aware of this and, and aware of the need to work together as a group with all the different boards. Um, I truly believe that that's what's given us the success that we've achieved thus far as a school committee. I think at some point in time, this might be a necessity. I think this might be something that we do need to do as a group of boards within the community. Presently, I, I think it's too soon for us to do this myself. Um, I just wanted to bring this up to the committee and, and kinda put the thought process, and I think you were all copied on this as well, so, um, just one second, Mr. Peterson, I'll get you right in. But I just, I just don't understand what benefit this would derive from any of us yet, not knowing anything. Um, nobody has these numbers yet, nobody has any idea, um, what it's actually going to impact town to town, so it's really difficult to, to get involved in this, uh, uh, as a group of people with really no idea as to what we're focusing on. Uh, Mr. Hummelberger, do you agree with that, or, I mean, 'cause you were also copied on this, too, I think, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with your analysis, Mr. Spitz. Until we know exact hard figures, we really don't have much to talk about.
Saturday. Um, so, I, I mean, that's kinda where my thought process is. I did tell Mrs. Anis that I would bring this to the committee and bring it up, um, at the meeting on my comments, um, but I, I just don't know where we're gonna go with this yet. Mr. Peterson?
I normally would agree with Mrs. Anis, and we've done this in the past, and I think it's, it's beneficial to meet with other boards, but at this point in time, I think it's all premature for all of us that are still, uh, trying to draft a budget. I have a question, if I may, on the chapter seventy situation. According to you, Mr. Hummelberger, and then I've spoken with Senator Moore and, uh, a couple others, the chapter seventy money for this year is not being touched. That's what we had, but the additional chapter seventy money that he was going to give us has not been forthcoming, is that right?
That Senator Moore was going to give us?
No, that this, that the governor and they were, there was additional monies that was supposed to be for chapter seventies, and they, uh, my understanding was that, uh, from, from Senator Moore, that they were holding off on distributing that money.
Um, that...
This chapter seventy money that you're alluding to is only what we know about and what's...
Correct.
Already...
That was what was budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Get budgeted to us at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
And that does not mean that next year's chapter seventy is not going to be touched, right?
Correct.
It was only for the current fiscal year. Thank you.
Mrs. Conan?
Do we have any idea of the expectation or, or when we may learn as a committee? I, I know, I'm sure that's a hundred-dollar question, but, you know, it's just, any idea when we think we're going to hear from the governor about any cuts or how they're going to affect each town?
He, he's going to have to be, um, excuse me.
That would differ.
You don't mind?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry.
Nobody wants these.
Through the chair.
Nobody wants these.
I don't know who wants the answer.
Nobody wants these.
We don't, we don't know what cuts, we have no idea what, what the governor's budget is going to look like, nor do we know whether or not the money from the federal government will trickle down in time to help the state. We do know that the eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-billion-dollar bailout package of incentive, whatever they're calling it, right, does have quite a bit of money in it for education. It has quite a bit of money...
Was it one-sixth of it, I think, was education?
Yeah, and quite a bit of it is, is for state aid.
Right.
So, and, and that is in the construction field and so forth and so on, for shovel-ready projects. So at this point, you know, it's like a pig at a poke as to, you know, what we're going to have for money and what the, actually, what the state is going to have. So I think everybody is, everybody is trying to anticipate what's going to happen, and I think, I think anyways, personally, we should just kind of sit back, relax a little bit...
And wait.
And, and wait. I know it's a difficult game to play, but I think it's a game that we have to play at this particular time, because we can't just go in and say, you know, "Well, we're not going to have this, we're not going to have this, and we're not going to have this," because we don't know that. We may, we may, God forbid, we, we may well come out better, depending upon what, how fast the president can get his package through. So I think we should just kind of, you know, go through the process as we've gone through it and, and let the chips fall where they may at the time, and, and just be ready for it, that's all.
I agree. That's, I just committed that I would bring that up tonight, um, but at the same time, I, I fully agree that this isn't something we can react to right now. I mean, there's nothing to react to yet, um, but just have the committee aware that, you know, there's probably some direction we could, we could go into as, as this progresses. Mr. Peterson?
I would agree with Mr. Boss. We've been there before, and he and I have said on, on tenuous times before, prepare our budget, uh, continue on the process, so we meet our dates and deadlines, because as usual, the state doesn't have to, we have to have ours in and have it approved, and it's just like the tax rate in this town. Uh, they didn't get it in in time, now I can't take it off my taxes for last year, so, uh, we have to do what we have to do and just continue to proceed and, and, like you said, not get too excited about it at this point in time, because many years, it goes from July to September before we can twist things around, so...
Okay, true. Yes?
Through the chair to the, to the committee, I can tell you quite honestly that, that Mr. Hummelberger and I have, and, and the administrative council have, have been preparing a budget to submit to the committee, and the budget that we are present, that we will be presenting to you will be a preliminary budget, but it will be with what we think we need to run the district.
That's what should be.
And I, and I think that's our responsibility.
Right, it is. All right, great.
Which is good, thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, well, that's all I have tonight. Um, I'd like to open the floor for any comments. Come on, I need a comment. This morning, come on, give us a, give me a break, give me something.
A closing comment?
You should just make a, a goodbye comment from here.
Well, I would like to just, you know, I, I, there are so many things happening here at Chapee and so many kids and, and teachers and staff to recognize that it's, it's difficult, you know, to, to name individually, but if you've been reading the telegram, our kids